Call the order of the special meeting for the CDV's Grand Forks Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. It's now five o'clock. Would please call roll.
Speaker Andrew.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehelf.
Here.
Council members Warren Sutter.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Kim Johnson.
Here.
Martin Myers. Brian Larson.
Does term. Coram number one, consider authorizing the city administrator clerk treasurer issue payment of recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Goodbye, Holmes.
Second.
Second by reappell. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better.
Yes.
Helms.
Yes.
Rehelf.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Entertained motion adjourned.
Move.
Goodbye, reappell. Second by Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried. Special meetings adjourned. Call the order of the city councilwork session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 is now 5:01. See Kirk, please call roll.
Speaker Andrew.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehelf.
Here.
Council members Warren Sutter.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Kim Johnson.
Here.
Brian Murphy.
President.
Brian Larson.
Does term. Coram number one, review of bid results for 2022 city project number six pedestrian improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we received bids last Tuesday for the pedestrian improvement project on Bigland Road. We received just the one bid from Stratocorporation with that bid coming in 53% higher than the engineer's estimate, with a vast majority of that overrun associated with the HOC system, which came in, you know, 65% higher above what Alliant Engineering was estimating for that. I did reach out to Alliant. You know, he said in his estimates they had accounted for what they anticipated for higher cost estimates. So he's not sure, you know, exactly why, you know, it came in so much higher. I mean, just availability of materials, price fluctuation. Now, it's, you know, everything's an influx, hard to guarantee any prices. But, you know, as we talked about it too, it could be just a timing thing right now. You know, the reason we only receive one bid, I mean, we got contractors right now that are, you know, more worried about finishing up their current projects and, you know, really looking ahead yet at this point to next year's project. I did talk to one subcontractor that had provided pricing to another general, and then some things came up, so they weren't even able to submit their bid. They had proposed to submit and didn't. So, you know, the hard part is, I've always said, is when you get one bid, you got no comparison. If we had two bids in that general area, you know, I could say that it's probably just, you know, material pricing right now. But, you know, I guess I gotta trust Alliant Engineering too, that, you know, they estimated what they really thought the price should be, and I think it's just, you know, strictly a case maybe where, you know, someone knew we were gonna get maybe one bid and, you know, kinda really bumped up their price. I don't know. I guess I'd have a hard time recommending award when it's that much higher. The reason we bid it so early, as you recall too, is just, you know, getting materials. You know, they're still thinking the poles themselves might be a six-month lead time. All of the other equipment associated with the HOC system is probably a two-month lead time. You know, we did have a August 15th, I believe, completion date in there. So, you know, my thought is, you know, maybe we get through this fall season and we bid it again really early winter, once contractors are looking for work. I think if we could get it awarded by late December, January, you know, even with a six-month lead time, that should put the poles here June, July, because a lot of that work we could get done too, even if the poles aren't here. And it'd just be a matter of setting the poles and getting everything activated once they're here. So, you know, project funding, again, if you remember, you're gonna use state aid allocation dollars for this project. I mean, we have adequate funds if that's the direction we want to go at this point, but, you know, I don't know that we wanna spend this much more than we need to either. So, you know, I guess, you know, probably my recommendation would be to, you know, reject the bids and, you know, rebid it probably late December, first part of January.
Mr. Johnson.
What is our timeline? What is our timeline in this for federal funding or state funding?
This one is just basically, we're gonna use our state aid funds, and there is no timeline on those. That's just funds that the city receives every year. It's not like our federal funds where, you know, we have a specific timeline.
Really?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're correct. We reject them and we rebid it. So, we get quotes. Carla.
Actually, you know, it may be a good thing that it's rejecting it because Nancy has put in for an MPO with Safe Streets and Roads for All, and that HOC system would fit into that, what they talk about in the grant, and we could have only paid 20% of that if we got a grant for it. And I know we like to do things earlier, but I think just where budgets are at and funding, yes, they could come in the state allocation dollars, construction dollars, but, you know, in five or 10 years, I mean, that money never goes away. We can use that for streets, and it's really hard to find grant dollars for streets. But it's a lot easier to find grant dollars for safety and sidewalks. And so, you know, and I know Nancy said that they're working on that action plan. We got a grant to do that. We could... Yeah, and I know you're in the process of doing it. Instead, it'd take about a year to do.
No, we're applying for the grant. We haven't received notice yet if we got it or not.
Okay. And maybe we wait to see if we get that, because then we'd only pay 20% instead of all of it. The other, and I guess why I'm talking about there, you know, there's just a lot of grant money out there, and we really have to be adamant about trying to get those dollars and pay a match of 20% instead of paying 100%. And there's transportation alternative dollars, for example, those sidewalks and those trail connections that we wanted to do. I just got a notice from the League of Minnesota Cities that the solicitation is open for those transportation grants, and we only have to put in a letter of intent by November 4th, and the application isn't due until January 13th. And we could use those for those sidewalks that we didn't approve. We could put in those trail access that Reed, I think, had a couple other ones of them, you know, where our trails don't really meet the sidewalks. And I guess personally, I just really think that we have to be adamant about going after federal dollars when they're available and here now. And I know there's money in the count now, but we really need to look five, 10 years down the road. So if we can use money, federal money, to do those sidewalks, that means we have more money to do the streets when those come in five to 10 years. And I just, I just really, I'll do whatever I can to help people do with it, but I'm just really concerned about where our dollars are in these funds, and that when there's grants to do some of these projects, we really need to look at trying to apply for grants.
And last year before the council decided to move forward with this project, we did submit a grant request. We were denied. In the current funding cycle, I mean, for the TA funds and everything, I mean, year 2027.
Yeah, July 2026, because their year starts July 1st, 2026. And then we just have to be patient, you know. We can't expect to do something next year. I mean, we have to... But, you know, we're only gonna pay 20%. So I guess, you know, it'd be nice to have direction from the council here if you want us as a city to look for those funding, apply for this funding, and knowing that you'll be patient that we can't do things like next year or the year after that, but we're only paying 20%.
Is it really the council's job to tell you to look for the funds, or is our job to make policy?
Well, I did look at grants funding. We were gonna discuss it, and I was told not to talk about it. So that's why I'm asking you.
I'm just asking a question.
I don't know who to ask, so that's why I'm asking this group. You know, what is the direction of the council? Are you willing to wait a couple years, you know, two, three years to get a project done, knowing that we only pay 20%? So if we know that's how you feel, then we can look for those fundings. No, we won't get it next week, next month, or next year.
So Nancy, the grant you're applying for, when again are funding times of those?
Between two Tims now.
A Tim sandwich? The Safe Roads for All is a truly just a study to look to see what types of safety projects we should be doing. It's an overall safety plan. So it is not for project only. So if we receive the funds, we would start sometime at the end of next year. We assume that that study would take about 18 months, at which point in time that plan would be over, and then we could start applying for Safe Streets for All implementation grants. So we're looking about three to four years out with that. With the TA fund, I've written about five since I've been here. I know what gets approved, and I know what doesn't. And showing up with projects, three different areas that don't really have a lot connected with each other, that's not a full project, that kind of has the connections, it has the plan behind it, it has a lot of due diligence, it isn't something that the city was looking at paying for themselves. Those are a little bit harder to get, and we've done that before, but we really get denied on those. So looking at the projects that we looked at for ADA individually or put together, they're not great projects for a TA. Something similar to like different trail connections that Reed and Steve and I were going to look at over the course of this winter, or one long project, that makes more sense, and we usually get those funded. So like sidewalk on 20th and in front of the street, that one was a TA project. Both of the trails up on 220, TA projects. The sidewalk out here, that was a TA project. Both of the safe routes to school sidewalks on Bigland, TA projects. But taking little individual pieces, they don't read well. So that's why we didn't look at the TA for those, particularly this year. So we hope to have a better project where we get that funded and work on the smaller projects with our state aid dollars. But that doesn't mean that like the HOC system, which we applied for, isn't a good one. And we can still look at the TA for some of those ADA-like trail projects that might all be a connection, so we can try to close the loop on our trail. But they have to be somehow joined together, and they have to be in our bike ped plan, which is what we're finishing up right now. So we kind of felt that it would be better to write it next year when we know that we have the backing, we have the plan, we have it listed in our projects, and we can move forward with a TA on that. But that's where we are with that as far as the different grants.
Well, I'm looking at the project here, and yes, they have different point system on that, but I guess my point is, I don't know why we don't try. You know, I mean, all they can say is no. And it's actually very simple. This letter of intent, what you do, you come up with, you just say what you're gonna do, okay? We're gonna do like the sidewalk between here and here for the mobility of older adults. I mean, it's only 250 max on the internet.
Yeah, I know how to write the grant. I've done it before.
Well, so I'm just...
I'm just saying that if the council wants us to write it on those small projects, Steve and I would be happy to put something together.
Well, and I guess my point is...
But when I write a grant, I usually like to write a grant that I know is gonna get funded, rather than just asking for money, because when you go in and ask for money all the time, they tend to deny you more than if you come in with a really good project. That's all I'm saying.
But I'm just thinking if we have three spots where our trails don't connect, that this is, it's what we're, where the project is, that's what we're doing. And it's not connecting here and not connecting there. But that's what our whole overview is. And again, I just think the way, you know, I've never seen emails like I have where, apply for this grant and this grant. There's lots of federal dollars, and, you know, maybe some of the rules have changed, and I just think we are really cutting ourselves short if we don't attempt to look at every grant we have a possibility. I just got an email today on a grant on recycling and compost, and I know Mark Olsted had said to Jason, can, is there any way we can put concrete in at the compost site? So I called Jason and said, here, here's a grant. The max is 250. You know, even if we can get part of that concrete, we need to apply to those grants because our money is, we are not flushed. And if we don't find money to do these through grants, we are just putting more burden on our taxpayers. And I, you know, and yes, it's not through the general fund, but if we don't have money to do this citywide milling overlay and steel coating, we're going to have to raise taxes to pay for that somehow, either paying off the bond or whatever. And so we, I'm sorry, as a person that looks at the dollars every day, we really have to be adamant of applying for anything and everything. I mean, what do we have to lose?
Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. As far as Mr. Emery's suggestion of denying this bid and maybe rebidding, I'm on board with that. As far as Ms. Anderson talking about, what she's talking about, I'm also on board with that fact that we do need to apply for what we can out there, because if you don't ask, you don't get. But at the same token, I'm not sure I'm willing to wait two to three more years to do this HOC system, especially that's something that's very important and we need to get done. So I think that if we, just like you said, have it rebid and hopefully get a little better price, and maybe we can move on with it. But some of this other stuff down the road, yeah, I'm on board with her. That's, you know, that's ask and see. I mean, it's, you know, so that's where I would be at with it.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess I would ask, I see a lot of value in what you're saying as for, this is a unique time, and the flow of federal dollars is pretty brisk, and we should try to capitalize on it. And I hear what you're saying as for, you know, if you go to the cookie jar one too many times, they'll just put the lid on there and say, you know, kinda keep your hand out of there right now. And maybe you guys on a staff level can get your heads together and really look at ways to make sure we're getting all that we possibly can at this unique time and not getting that reputation of every time you turn around, they're coming to ask for money. If you guys could just reconcile that and maybe come with a joint recommendation back to the council, that'd be a big help. And we really, if you guys can kind of meet in the middle some kind of way, I think that'd be good. But we hear, again, both sides value in both of those.
And that was the discussion we had at staff level between Nancy, Reed, Mr. Murphy, was to do a better job planning, so we have a good application as opposed to just throwing something in there that, you know, may not stick. So...
To that point, if I could, that's why I'm glad we are proceeding with that extensive study of the industrial park, including 10th, but also honestly asking, is that our highest priority there or not? And if not, what is? And then when you have identified those, they fit into a plan, now you're ready. Same, you know, we'll call it out. You know, the Bigland roundabout, we said, let's keep that moving. Let's have a friendly conversation with the neighbors. Let's ask ourselves, what would we do for these abutting adjacent properties? What would we do with Ortons? And have that ready to go, you know, as close as you can, so that when the time comes, you've got it all planned out, and you know how it's gonna go, and everybody's at peace with it. So I feel it's important to move all these things forward in a methodical way, just so that when the time comes, you're ready.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And that's part of the reason why that bike ped plan, you know, we're pretty adamant about making sure the projects that we want to see applying for federal or state dollars, it's in that plan. A couple of other plans that we're putting together, and like with Reed, there is the trails funds available, but there are certain things with a TA that I know we've done. Oftentimes, the ones that are on like city property or like a government property, those rank a lot higher than one, let's say, like by Good Sam, because that's on private property and trying to maintain it. So they like to give funds where we know we're not gonna be able to special assess those projects, or where the city would be maintaining it anyways, so they're guaranteed that 20-year maintenance, because that's really important to them, is that they're maintained, the snow is removed, that they're accessible. Sometimes when you put them on private property, you run that risk. And right now, we're low on staff to do snow removal, so we're trying to work with Reed to pick good spots where we know it's already connected. And that's why, you know, like with the Bigland Road ones, we made that guarantee that we would remove snow off of them because we had to. Otherwise, we pay that money back. So there's a lot of fine tuning that comes with some of these grants that you have to make sure that you can meet the additional requirements they have, or it's not worth it to us, because then the money goes back. And we don't have the money to pay it back either if we're not meeting their requirements of that grant. So there's a lot to just write, you know, looking for the funds and writing them. When the state or the feds have money available to you, it's never just give it to you and see you later. There's always follow-up and a lot of things that are involved with it, which is why, you know, you kind of have to address those issues as well. So that's why meeting together with Reed, particularly because sometimes you can write the grant, but then Reed's left with the responsibility of maintaining it and removing snow and doing all those things for the next 20 years are the life of that grant. So we have to make sure that we have the people and the availability to do that, rather than just getting the money and going from there. So...
And that's what we had planned on doing by the library and at the transit anyway. We had planned that, you know, parks would take care of it, so...
Yes.
Mr. Better.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, on the HOC system, is there more than one company that makes that, or is it just one company?
There's some different suppliers that supply those components.
So would it be in our best interest to bid that separately and have it available for a contractor to do?
You know, I don't like sometimes bidding something like that, because then it maybe puts the city on the hook a little bit if there's issue with materials or, you know what I mean? Where it's nice when it's been part of the package, and then it's the responsibility of the contractor to deal with his supplier. So, you know, you could do that, Mr. Better, but I don't know. It just, I don't think that always works good either.
I think the one thing that we should do is maybe visit with Brian Larson about it, because UND has two HOC systems out there, and he might have information on what UND paid for it, and some of the things that they did out there, who they went through, who put it in, because I know Brian had asked about the HOC system long before. So it would, it would be, you know, it might be wise to get some information from him as well to see kind of what they paid, or where they got theirs from, because that might also be helpful to us in this process.
It wasn't for Mr. Larson, but I did find out the contractor that installed the HOC system out there.
Oh, okay.
And he was gonna bid this project, and then something kind of came up at the last moment, and they weren't able to submit their bid. So...
I was just thinking, you know, supply chain issues, if we bid that now, and then that just gives, you know, two or three more months available to get the system all delivered, and then bid the installation of it separately. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Yeah. I could check with Alliant on that option, see if they've ever done that. Like I said, I think it opens the city up a little bit more for just liability, you know, deal, things we'd have to deal with if the components come and they don't work. You know, now you kind of have the general contractor deal with all of that stuff, you know. So... But it's questions I can ask. Very good questions.
I think you just need to look at it, bring it back, and go from there. But Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. On that, I would say most contractors aren't gonna want to work with product that they didn't purchase. Just, there's, to your point, like, there's so many things that can happen with, that they don't know what you ordered, what, you know, whatever. We talked about this on the Water Night side, you know, because of those same supply chain issues, like, should we go ahead and order a bunch of this stuff? Hydrants and those type of things that we know we're potentially gonna need for projects. And just after thinking about it and really understanding, it probably isn't, it might save you some time, it might cost you more money than what you think, just because that uncertainty is probably gonna get factored into any type of bid. So I don't, like I said, for time, if we absolutely know that we want to put it in by a certain time, and we're worried about that six months, then maybe it could be, but you're probably gonna pay quite a bit more for it. So that would be my takeaway from it. I don't know what Steve's...
And again, what I got from the engineer from Alliant is the HOC system components, he figured about a two-month lead time. It's just the poles themselves. But again, you know, that's the last thing that go up. So June, July, we could get all the other work done, and then even if these poles don't come till the 1st of August, you know, within a week, you got them set and operational. So that's where we felt, you know, we do have a little bit of time here.
And, thank you. And then for Nancy, the SS4A funds, obviously, we're just into the grant for the action plan, so we don't know a lot about it. But on something like that, are project warrants gonna be part of that? Or, you know, because we had an issue with how this is warranted or not warranted. It might possibly be somewhat 10% warranted versus 100% warranted. Is that gonna be, I mean, we're talking about federal programming dollars, so...
Part of the reason why we wrote the grant at such a high amount was so that we could get a little bit more specific on those safety projects that we think we're gonna need.
Okay.
So we do more detailed analysis, which might include, you know, an ICE, an intersection evaluation control, that type of a, type of an evaluation, because we wanted to make sure that it wasn't, we can do all the studies we want that says, oh, we know we have a lot of traffic here, we have issues at certain times of the day. We don't need to spend that kind of money to do that. We do it with our street and highway plan. What we want the safety plan was to take what we're looking at with our street and highway, to take where we know we have high traffic at certain times, where we have critical crashes, or where we have near misses, and then do an evaluation to tell us what we think our best, you know, intersection control or safety measure would be at that location where we know it's not safe. Because we have a lot of matrices that says if you have, you know, 800 cars over the course of a day, maybe you look at a yield. And if you have more cars, then you look at, you know, a two-way stop. We have all that. We don't need that. We want a study, we want it very individualized, so that we can take every intersection or every safety control, whether it be widen it, put in a left turn in the, you know, as a center lane, and take that and be able to completely turn around immediately and write it as a project. And the only people that qualify for the implementation grants for the Safe Streets for All are those that have the safety plan itself. So that's why we're doing the plan first, and it has to be approved by the feds before you can write the grants for the implementation project. So that's why we thought if we could spend that kind of money, really get down to the nitty-gritty, we would have it project-specific, ready to go when we wanted to write for the grant. So... And that could be HOC systems, it could be traffic signals, it could be widening the road, adding turn lanes. I mean, you name it. It could come down to a lot of things. It could be like particularly 2 and 220, that odd angle when you're going, when you're coming off of 220 and you're heading east, where you have to look over your shoulder at a 45-degree angle, which causes a lot of crashes. Trying to address that so that we can get the funds to make all those changes. And then we actually apply for grants that a lot of other individual communities won't. So that helps us out quite a bit.
I guess my point was more to make it just this project. I'm just worried, like, if we decide we want to wait for SS4A dollars after the action plan is created, and then if that's included, like, isn't there a possibility that in that grant process, they'll request warranty information, and we won't be able to hit it? Because we've already kind of talked about that with MINDOT. So I just, I don't want us, my point is, I don't want us to put our eggs in SS4A dollars even two years down the road, because I don't know if we're gonna qualify.
Well, the HOC system itself is something that we're already working with, with the state. So we wouldn't be addressing pedestrian safety at that point, because we've already addressed it. We'd be looking more like more traffic-type safety, so the SS4A. We don't want to address things that we've already addressed. Now, if you want us to, so that you can apply for those funds for the HOC system and wait those five, six years, we certainly can. But from my... But from my standpoint, I'm not going to look at intersections that we're already putting safety measures at. So, so we, so warranting a HOC system is a little bit different than, like, warranting intersection control, so.
And then, just finally, I know we're kind of off-topic with the grant issues, but we're going to be talking about a grant in the next item, so, while I, I mean, I agree with Carla that, you know, we should try to find all the grant dollars that are available. You know, having worked with people that write grants for a living, and probably more importantly, people that review grants for a living, or not for a living, but that are asked to review grants, I don't know if the, the issue is tech, is, like you put it, like, I don't think they look at it like, we're going to the well too often. I think it's, it's more in, in line with what maybe Naz was saying, is, do these projects meet the strict requirements that they are? I, I think that's the issue. I mean, I don't know, we get grant, grant offers all the time, and you start looking at them like, oh, it's, there's $50 million out for bridges or something. Well, right, but then you look two lines below and you don't qualify for any of it. You know, I mean, I, I just, when asked about what the pro, what the cost is, is, the cost is really time, and I don't want us just writing grants for no reason, not because I feel like they're going to be saying, well, East Grant First just writes all these grants. I worry about the people that actually have to write the grants and defend them and work on them. And so, I feel the people that are best asked about that is the department heads, most department heads, most of the experts in those fields know the avenues. If they don't, forward them to those people and they will know if it, if it attaches to a policy that we've given. To your point a little bit, I mean, yeah, we can tell people what we want to do, and if it fits into that policy and if there's grant dollars for it, I think those people will be most, most inclined to know whether it's, it's an acceptable use or if it's going to be, if it's going to fit our need. You know, like I said, there is a lot of grant dollars out there, but most of those grants are written for a specific purpose and even a specific user in mind, so, like, or set of users that, while it may look app, or appetizing, I guess, to go after a lot of it, I, you know, it's not written, they aren't written for our use, so we will fail to qualify. So, like I said, obviously, there's things out there that, that would help, like, the next one, you know, the next one's going to be a great one for us or whatever, but I just, and people in their industries, in their professional groups, you know, you get the newsletters, you get, you know what's out there. You're all in those supply chain, or those newsletter chains and all those type of things. You know what's coming down from the feds, from the states, from other people, even from public donors or private donors. I, I think that should be the conduit. Obviously, if you feel like there's one out there that fits our policy, go after it, but I don't want us to just, you know, sit there and, just because it says sidewalks or something, like, let's be smart a lot. Thank you.
All righty. Anything else, Steve?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Move on to number two, requests accept COPS grant for training. Looks like Chief Headman's not here, but if he has any questions on this, we can relate to him and Mr. Murphy, but novel is moving on next week.
Don't get it if you're not here.
Yeah. Move on to number three, consider excess liability coverage 2023. Carla?
Thank you, President. I sent in your packet, they have the three options for liabilities, and then I also emailed today, just kind of a spreadsheet on there, just because you can kind of see it visually more. So what it is, is option one is that you just leave the maximum statutory tort is at its limits, which is $500,000 for a single claim for a single occurrence, and the maximum is 1.5 million for that. Number two would be you'd waive the limit, and that would mean that a single claimant could get $2 million, it would be, the maximum would be 2 million for that. Or number three, we could waive the statutory limits and purchase excess liability. And I included what the dollar amounts would be if we did that. Other years, we have never, we have not ever bought the excess. Other years, we picked number two. I checked with the league, and majority of the members, they don't waive it. By waiving it, it's probably about a $1,200 bill for us to do that. I know in the past, the reason for that was that if we were negligent and we had a tort and somebody had damages at a million, that single person would only get 500, where if we did this, waived the statutory limit, they could get the, they could get up to 2 million. And that was the reasoning before that. And we do have to do this every year, because with renewal of our insurance, we have to, we have to decide if we want to leave it where it's at, waive it, or buy additional liability insurance for it, so that is why it's brought to you every year.
So your recommendation is to do number two?
Well, and like I said in the past, they, we've chose number two.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Do we want to hear from Mr. Galstead about this at some point? Doesn't have to be today, Mr. Galstead, you maybe want to prepare a response.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll, I did raise the question at staff meeting yesterday, and I'll, I'll address it here this week and give you guys a brief synopsis.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else have anything for Carla on that?
Thank you.
Thanks, Carla.
Number four, discussion on 2023 budget.
I just wanted to keep you abreast of where we are in the budget. I know we talked about doing that at every meeting. And at this point, we're at 14% of the levy, and Mr. Murphy did include in there, from a budget meeting that he held with the department heads on what they came up with, so I, he sent that recap to you. I guess if you have questions, you have to ask him on that. Any questions or suggestions on the budget or where we're at now, or, I guess it's just informative if you have questions.
Mayor?
I think at some point, it would be appropriate to have the conversation just openly among all of us as to what are we willing to take from reserves at this time on a year like this to try to reduce that number? Right, in certain years, we've taken 200 or 300,000 out of reserves, we're above most of the targets for reserve dollars that we've set aside to try to, in a year like this in particular with a lot of inflation, to maybe minimize to some extent the tax burden for our residents this year. And again, you can't do that forever, but a year like this with unusually high increases, we should just talk about it as a group and see what are we willing to do in terms of, of pulling some from our reserves to mitigate some of that property tax increase.
Do you know what our percentage is right now? Reserve percentage?
Well, right now, we, we are expected to break even, and our reserve is at 48%. I, I did send that, sorry, I didn't bring that page with, but, yeah, that's what we have at that 14%.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do, which, what do we have punched in for health insurance?
We have punched in that the city will cover 4% of the increase. I believe that some of the unions have actually asked for, to meet on that, to open it up to meet on that. That's, all I know is I think they've asked, I'm sorry, I'm not a part of that, but.
No, but I just wanted to know.
Yeah, so that could change if, with the union thing, but at this point, it's just the 4% increase that the city would pick up, and the rest would go to the employee.
Do you happen to know, Carla, what is the current proposed rate increase year over year that we're getting now for group health? Have you heard that number lately? The total increase?
For next year? Yeah. I don't know what it is. You know, we went out and, we went to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and employees have four options to pick from. So part of that is that we are giving them more choices, and they can have a higher deductible, and their premium won't be as high.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Yeah, so, yeah, Terry and David did lots of work on that to find other options. And so that, that's, and the employees did vote on what they wanted, and they, I bet 90% voted to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Anybody else have any questions for Carla on the budget? Thank you. Moving number five, fund 401 state bonding finance improvement, additional questions, Carla?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this came up at another work session, we had discussed it, and there was more questions, so I brought information back. And what was asked to bring back was, there was a question on the 3% administrative fee. It is not collected by the city engineers. The city engineers put it in there in the roll information to cover incidental costs and other costs they might not be aware of, like publishing, that we have attorney fees, some projects we even have to buy property and such. So that 3% is just always put on, on that roll, and many times, projects go over what this special assessment does, and that kind of covers some of that, too. So I did send some information from a project that came out of the 401 fund. I did explain at the last meeting that it was a revolving grant loan, it's a grant from the state of Minnesota in for a revolving loan fund for non-electrical infrastructure projects. And so we've been fortunate enough to use that. I sent a list of all the rolls we have on there, so all the projects we have used. So the example was in 2009, there, number four, there was a paving project, and the one page, it shows what the estimated costs are, and then how much is going to be assessed. And then on the other spreadsheet, going the other direction, we do keep track of every project and all the expenses that go into it, just to make sure we reconcile with the role and with our system, and then we put them in as a fixed asset. So for this example, the total costs were $438,969, and we assessed $446,624. So there was a difference of $7,654 that was collected on the rolls. Like I stated, some projects we do, we have assessed less than what that total project is. So it just, they vary in every project, so. And when the, you know, the engineers do that estimate, you know, that's done before the project is completed, and I guess it's our best guess. Maybe Steve could answer some more on how they do the special assessment rules.
We do have one question, back to that administrative fee. I know there are some fees, like contingencies and other fees, that if we come in under, then you do the final assessment rule and it's reduced by that amount. In other words, the dollars go back in across the total of all of it, and the actual indebtedness then per resident is a bit less because of the ability to, the, the project came in a little bit lower, and then that slice went back out, and the final assessment rule may be even lower than the preliminary assessment rule. Which dollars go back at the end?
Yeah, I guess I'm, you know, kind of first time seeing this, too, but, you know, in this case, if you look, the contingency amount was, was $0. I'm assuming that this role was probably done after the project was completed, so we knew all of the final costs. If we award, oh, how do I say it? If we hold the final assessment hearing before we complete the project, yeah, then we always keep in either a 5% or 10% contingency just to, for any potential change orders or whatever. And then, yeah, if the project would come in cheaper, you know, we could redo the assessment rule filed out with the county. Because if it goes down, you don't have to hold your final hearing again. I mean, if it was to go up, you know, then you'd have to redo your hearing, but.
So it's the contingency amount that goes back, not necessarily the administrative portion?
Right.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. With that administrative amount, where are those dollars? Are they in that, what is, I don't even know what they're calling this account, that 104 or 401, or?
So, yeah, what happens is when we collect the assessments, and administrative fees within those assessments, they go to whatever bond fund that we use, this would be to the 401 fund, and they would be in that fund to cover any expenses there might be after that, but, you know, typically, we collect special assessments from the county. If they're late, there's also interest and penalties attached to that. So those all come into the 401 fund. And the 401 fund is.
Well, if they're late, they should go to that assessment, right?
They come in the 401 fund also.
But I mean, we don't pay some, we don't pay the late fees, like.
No, I said if they're late, they, if they're late to the county, so any interest penalties come into the 401 fund. And the only payment we're paying out of the 401 fund right now is to Water and Light for, I think it was the 2008 projects, and we have three years left to pay on that.
Do we have an accounting of the payments, the expense payments attached to that administration fee out of that fund?
No, the only thing that happened in that fund was.
So like, for this, in this 2009 example, where, where was that 3,000, or 3, where is the administration, $8,000?
Total was 11. There has never been any of that moved. Other years.
So it's still sitting in that account?
Well, no, other years on the spreadsheet I gave you a couple weeks ago, it show what how then administration had wanted to take money out of that, so there was money taken out of that fund and put into the street reconstruction fund, I believe.
I just.
So, but we're back to where we're at. If you looked at the balance sheet, we're at 2.52, and that is what the amount we got.
And I'm, and this isn't, this has obviously been in place for a while. I just don't feel that there's adequate accounting for something that we are charging for and don't have a, well, we may have a stated goal or purpose for it, but we don't have an accounting of actually using it for that. And I guess to me, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with whenever we say we're going to do one thing and then we do it, use it for something else. So maybe we do, I shouldn't say that we don't. I haven't seen anything, or whenever I ask, where is that money, or what's it been spent on, or what, it always feels like we don't know where it is, or it gets, and to your point, maybe someone grabs it and puts it somewhere else, and that's what happens. I guess I have a problem with that. Like, it's not, we're not talking millions of dollars, but whenever we say we're going to do something and then use it for something else, that is a problem with our legitimacy as, as the state. And I think that we should do better on what that money is supposed to be spent on and where it is at going forward.
And I would agree with you in that, the discussion that came out of that meeting was to probably put a committee together to look at what the 401 for, 401 fund is for, and, you know, number one, maybe we don't even do that administrative charge. I mean, we let Steve know what expenses we have, or we do that charge and we move that money right away to the general fund or whatever fund we want.
I just, and I don't even, I mean, it might take a committee, or usually a committee doesn't, is a way to, to anything.
Well, and that was just a suggestion.
My point is, is, I mean, to me, and I'm not an accountant, there's accountants in the room that would know better, but to me, it seems like there should be a line in that fund that says, this is our expense, and every time there's a, a credit to that, or debit to that, and credit, whatever, and then it goes into the other side, like, it should have a, a output, right? It should have some, you know, what I'm going to say.
You know exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
But, you know what I mean, it should say, this is in here, and it's going to here because this is what we do. And the reason for that is, we might need to charge 5%.
the people of East Grand Forks deserve to have their money well accounted for and be efficiently used, I guess. So maybe it is 2%. Maybe we don't need it at all. I just, I hate saying that we have an administration. I mean, to me, like, as the, if you put yourself in like the conspiracy theories, like, that's the line that you always look for. Oh, administration fee or whatever. It's always like a dollar or something. You're like, what's that going to? You know, I, I don't know what it goes to. And it's, like I said, it's not a huge amount of money. It's not going to make or break our budget. I just feel like it's one of those things that we should at least know. Especially because when we do assessments, those are probably some of the most contentious hearings that we have, right? And 3% or 5% or 2% matters when those people look at those bills. And I just, I feel, feel like we owe it to ourselves, to them, to have a good answer for that line anyway, so.
Mr. Reed.
I'm guessing on the 401, we're not getting interest on that. So why don't we take and pay those three years off and save all the interest we're paying on those three years that we have with water and light?
We can, I mean, whatever, I mean, we do collect interest on our investments and that money is in a pool with other money. But yes, we could do that.
It looked like there was over 20 some thousand dollars in interest or more.
Uh, not left on it, but yes, we could. We paid in December, we could look at it and just pay it off. That, we could do that, yes.
Just asking.
I think, um, the last meeting too, I think Brian made a comment about looking at how we're using this fund, how we should be using it and to take a look at it going forward. So I think there, that's one discussion that we need to keep doing to figure out what this fund, how we're going to be using it, what's it going to be used for, what can we use it for? And to have the list of this is, these are projects we can use this for. This is what we're, this is why it's here. So I think that's what we need to do going forward. And who has the authority in keeping track of, like you said, Mr. Demers, when stuff gets moved, where does it go?
And, and when those transfers were done, they were, they were approved by council in the past.
Mr. Johnson.
Well, I, uh, I like the fact that Steve, or I mean, Mr. Demers went from 5% and at the end of the conversation went to 3 and 2. Why are we constantly going up and we should be going down? We don't need these excess funds. That's my take. Save the taxpayers' money, always.
Anybody else have anything on that? If not, the mayor has a couple of things that he wants to touch base on. It'll take a couple of minutes, Mr. Reed. So. Two seconds. Oh, really, was he? Yeah, one minute.
I will, I'll go briskly here. Couple of things. First of all, and Mr. Gordy's going to come in after and mop up in case I misspeak or miss some details. Uh, Mr. Gordy sent out to all, all the local businesses, um, something put out by the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. They are making available in our area, a total of 421,218. And that's an opportunity inside of a certain district. Unfortunately, it ends at the Red Lake River, so anybody south of there wouldn't qualify. But it goes out to the edge of Highway 2. It goes north to 23rd. And what it is, it's a 30% match for any dollar that you spend on qualifying expenditures as a business. Um, so it's 421,218. I talked about the, the area that it covers. It covers repair or renovation of a property, building construction, landscaping, streetscaping, demolition and site preparation, pre-design, design, engineering, engineering, uh, non-publicly-owned infrastructure and related amenities. So the grants cannot be used for the purchase of real estate, can't be used for your normal business operations, can't be used for business operating expenses such as inventory, wages and working capital. Renovations or construction must begin by the 5th of January 2024 and be completed by the 30th of June 2026. And again, it's up to 30% of project costs. And I've probably said it, the deadline for application for the first round is this December the 20th. That's why time is of the essence. I do hope our friends in the media will pick up on this. Then they'll go ahead and administer or approve partial amounts month by month by month until the funds are gone. I really want us to utilize that full 421,218. And if we do, of course, we're building into our city. If you do the math, it's about 1.4 million dollars. I know, we, we're going to buy stuff these days and everything is about 10% more than you think it should be. You know, we, we've come through 8% annual inflation for a while and now extend that out over more than a year. And that can of coffee that should be eight or $8, let's say now it's $9. So we're seeing that, that everywhere we go. And so we're reluctant maybe to build back into our businesses at a time like this, thinking, well, will it plateau? Will it come down or what? But what if they can come in with a 30% match that takes your 10%, like wow, inflation and gives you 20% extra back? So there's really never been a better time when you have this grant money available to build equity back into your business. Things like bleach and alcohol have been tough on our fixtures and furnishings, you know, walking around, disinfecting everything. Um, so it's going to be a really, really good time to spruce up all of our businesses up and down, um, through the corridor, all the way through our community. And again, December 20th, get your applications in. You probably got the email. If you didn't, reach out to Mr. Gordy.
The applications must be made to Northwest Minnesota Foundation. They will be the ones who will be, that the agreement will be made with. And there will be, there are several people, remember I sent you the email? There are several people on a local committee who will review the projects.
Are they, do you, is it required pre-approval before the project can go forward or can it be a project that maybe is already being done?
You have to have the funding for the project in hand before, when you submit your, uh, you have to have the letters of commitment, whatever, in hand, Mark, before you move forward, before the grant will be approved.
I'm just saying, say someone just put in windows right now, uh, on October 20th.
Pre-approved. You can't, you can't do things after the fact.
It's all pre-approved, okay. You can't apply for something that you've just done. They will require proof of matching funds. So for the 70% that you're going to put in, um, it cannot include state or federal funds or existing equity in a building. Um, but matching funds could be a bank commitment letter, a bank statement or balance sheet showing you have the cash on hand, a commitment letter from a donor. So they're going to see, need to see proof ahead of time that you can come up with the 70%.
EDA loan. EDA loan. As well.
Cool. So please, um, let's max that out. Let's absolutely max that out. It's a great opportunity to really overcome inflation and, and build equity back into your business.
And if Bemidji and Menomen don't use all of their allotment, we will have access to that in the later stations, stages of this grant program.
So even though the application goes into the, the Bemidji office, Mr. Gordy has some additional information if anyone needs it. Again, I hope the media pick up on this and, and we really want to get the word out. One last thing. One last thing. Um, you know, we, we say there's, uh, there's not enough good news. Here's a bit of good news. Um, I got an email recently and here's part of it. Good afternoon, Mayor Gander. I don't know if the city does anything like this, but I was encouraged by a family friend to reach out to your office and request a mayoral greeting or happy birthday message for Harvey Hoiberg. Harvey will be celebrating his 100th birthday on October 30th, 2022. I'm more than happy to send a happy birthday wish from all of us here on the city council and city staff. I do want to thank Naomi Donovan and her column in the spirit for the information that I'll share. Harvey Hoiberg grew up on a farm near Pekin, North Dakota. This, this kind of reminds me, I'll be honest, it reminds me of my dad, reminds me of Henry Tweetin, of that whole generation that has served our community and our nation so, so mightily. And it, it just absolutely warmed my heart to go back through and consider the life of, of Harvey and his family. He grew up on a farm near Pekin, North Dakota. His future wife Donna hailed from Binford, North Dakota. He jokingly said that the girls in Pekin weren't good enough. They knew each other as youngsters because Harvey rode horseback with Donna's cousin when they herded cattle. Just think, you know, little cattle drives up and around the territory back probably 80 years ago. Harvey was drafted by the US Army and served in Germany during World War II. Is involved in the Battle of the Bulge. Harvey and his wife Donna married in 1946, choosing December 7th as their wedding date. And Donna said, repatriotic and Pearl Harbor was such a tragedy. Well, after they were married, they moved to Minneapolis where Harvey was trained for his 35-year career with the railroad. After that career ended, Harvey was trained for the ministry and was ordained as a pastor. Pastor Hoiberg talks about the joy of living a prosperous life. He says that this doesn't mean money, it's your family, your marriage, your job and your health. Harvey, you set a high bar for longevity and for living an amazing life. Thank you for sharing your life with all of us here in East Grand Forks. Happy 100th birthday this Sunday, uh, um, October 30th. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Vetter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bo, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.[1755.82]